I will call the September 12, 2016, meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education to order at 6:31. Ms. Wick, would you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney?
Present.
Mr. Uphoff?
Present.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yo.
Ms. Maitzen?
Yeah.
Mr. Zott?
Present. Board has a quorum. I have proof that this meeting has been properly noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, and if anyone wants to see a copy of that notice, it will be with Ms. Wick. We have an agenda before us this evening.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Charlie with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by unanimous voice vote. I only have one thing for the president's address, and that's to congratulate Mr. Crowe, who I believe yesterday has ended his career in the military after 22-plus years, and so congratulations on that, Dan, and thank you for your service to our country.
You're worth it.
Agenda item A, consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that any board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I would note that we have generous donations of $150 from the Stone Mothers Club of Rutland for the OMS Band Program, $100 from the Stone Mothers Club Rutland for the Art Program at Brooklyn. The Oregon Brooklyn Lines Club has donated $150 for the Stuff on the Bus Campaign. The Flanagans have a $200 donation for school supplies, and Holy Mother of Consolation Church has a $75 check for school supplies, and so we thank all of those folks for their generous donations to the district. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Hold on.
Yes?
I would like to ask Andy Wyland some time in the near future to go over some of these expenses at your leisure, and know you're busy. I didn't have time to talk to you this weekend, so...
Great.
We'll leave it for the office.
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. The consent calendar has some contracts, so we'll need a roll call vote. Ms. Wick, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Mr. Zott?
Yes. Motion carries by seven zero margin. Section B of the agenda, communication from the public. Ms. Wick, is anyone from the public registered?
No.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the board this evening?
There is.
Okay. Please come on up, and we actually, Chief, we have a seat here, join us at the table.
I feel honored.
And we are honored to have you.
Thank you.
So, why don't you introduce yourself? I think we all know, but for the members of the viewing public...
My name is Brian Yule. I'm the chief of police here in Oregon, current resident, live at 300 Medina Street. Understand that the board has on the agenda tonight to talk about the canines in the schools. Is that still on here?
Yes.
It is one of the items.
That's next one.
Gotcha. All right. I just wanted to bring to your attention, first of all, thank you for bringing that as an action item, I appreciate that, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that there is a policy paper that was written, I'm assuming by some of the board members, back in 2000, acknowledging that, quote, "We have a serious problem in our district with our students' illegal use of drugs and alcohol." That you acknowledge that you believe there is a real and significant issue that your schools should not only be violence-free, but also drug and alcohol-free. And it goes on to say, "In order to achieve your goal of drug and alcohol-free schools, that you would ask your administrators and staff to fully enforce the revised drug and alcohol policy to help identify and work with and stop illegal drugs and the use of alcohol in your schools," and that the board will, to the fullest extent possible, back administration and staff in such efforts. And also that it is your, in this paper, you just stated that it is your first priority to remove drugs and alcohol from your schools, and that you will take whatever actions are appropriate to accomplish this. I think that during these discussions, you've heard from members of the community, you've heard from students, you've heard from your staff, that they are all in favor of this. I think that the message has gone across, that even some of you folks that ran for election have acknowledged this, that you would support having dogs in the schools to conduct random searches. So I would hope that, based on all the information that's been provided, that you would take that into serious consideration, because I think everyone in the community, including your administrators and the police department, would like to have this tool to help combat alcohol and drugs in school.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to address this board this evening? Any other member of the public? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is item C, information items. Is there any member of the OEA present this evening who would like to address the board? And I don't see anyone, so we'll move on. And I'm pleased to introduce tonight our newest member, Tessa Riley, who is an Oregon High School student, who will serve as our student representative for the balance of the year, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Okay, why don't you introduce yourself to the board and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Do you want me to stand up?
No, you can stand up.
I didn't know.
No, we're being casual.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tessa Riley. I'm going, I am a senior at Oregon High School. I'm very involved with a lot of different clubs. I'm in Model UN, I am student body president of our student council, and I'm also in OHS Imagine, which is like a sexual assault and awareness, like, club. I'm in Ecos, which is an environmental club. I'm also on the Dane County Board for the Environmental, Agricultural and Natural Resource Committee as well. So I'm very excited to be here. I love being involved in...
So what do you do in your spare time? Yep.
What do I do in my spare time? I don't have much.
She's got Monday nights, she runs her Monday nights free, apparently.
I also inter with Mr. Crowe at his law firm, so that's exciting.
So, Tessa and I are gonna get together in the next couple of weeks to talk about the student rep's role and how we want to proceed for the year, so I look forward to that, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Moving to action items, D1 is Policy 436, and that's the student policy on alcohol and other drugs, and this is the item that Chief Yule referenced, and Gwen, this was something that you requested be on the agenda, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zott. And again, I would like to thank you for putting this on the agenda. I wanted to finish this earlier in this year, however, everything got changed around, and I'm no longer chair of the policy committee, but I am grateful that we can follow through with this. At first, I was against drug dogs in the schools. I did not want them there at all, and, but once I did my research, I began to realize how important they really are and how unobtrusive they are. So within, I had many discussions, listened to parents, taxpayers, talked to students and administrators, and at the policy committee in March, we heard from a lot of constituents, Chief Yule and the administrators, and so, and then there was a request to have, look at the mental health issues and have a summit on that, which we did follow through with, and people are very concerned about this issue. So I did change my mind, and, you know, some people, one of the, one of the comments was, well, we already can allow drug dogs into the school. Well, that's at the request of administration. The only difference in this policy is the change of the word "random," and I think that that's essential, because there's no heads-up, the word doesn't get out, and all of a sudden, we have, you know, people can't prepare for it, which we know they do, and it's a very good system, and I like to also say that that word "random" is very important. This is the key change in the policy, and after 16 years, I think that just changing one word can make a world of difference. And again, to reflect what's already been said, is that administration is looking to the school board's guidance and to, and support to help out with this situation. Some of the negatives for it was that, you know, we don't want to be targeting, or not negatives, I'm sorry. On the action item, the changing the policy is reasoned as such through the policy committee. Administration of OHS and OMS would like to be able to use the random canine drug searches. The student school board representative at the time, Nina Lebrun, relayed to us that the kids, that the students were very pro-random dog searches, because they don't want it in their building either. And I also wanted to add a special comment that never was spoken about, and that was, having been a teacher at Oasis, one of our policies was at Oasis, under the leadership of Randall Smith, is kids would come up to us and say, "We think such and such is high," and we would politely ask them to leave the school, because we don't want it in, we didn't want it at Oasis, we don't want it in the high school or the middle school. And then after things calmed down a little bit, we got them the appropriate help. Nobody wants it in their schools, and we all know what's, what that's all about. The Oregon School Department supports the use of random dog sniffs, and also I have had numerous conversations with Judge Cox, and she, and, that was good, she...
I forgot to tell you, we have a no ducks rule.
Or crickets. And the police department and Judge Cox are willing to work with administration, and particularly with students, to get them on the right track again, and I think that before they hit 18, when people can't go in, you know, actually tell them what to do because of the law, if we can help them before they turn 18, I think this is a benefit. I also believe that it limits the possibility of liability issues against targeting of students. If it's random, everyone is up for it, rather than saying, our policy as it is now, an administrator can say, "I think that this person, we can bring a drug dog in." Well, you know, mistakes can be made with that, and then the legal issues are, could be costly. The drug searches are no cost to the district, and I am, I was very impressed by Chief Yule when he said, "If we can save one student before they turn 18 and get them the necessary help, the canine drug sniffs will be effective." So we've done our research, Judge Cox is willing to work with them, but she also wanted me to relay to you that if they do not follow through with their, with a proactive and restorative collaborative restoration, there will be consequences. So it's not a get out of, you know, it's not something that is going to be overlooked. So there is responsibility for the parents and the students. So also, this is the will of the people, and the board should listen to this, because we are elected officials, and we are, we need to listen to our administrators, to our taxpayers, and to our students. So I urge everyone on the board to change this one word, and let's get it going. Thank you.
Charlie?
I actually did some research on this as well, and it's obviously a significantly serious issue to be addressed. I have several concerns with this one more change. It does, I think, change the basis for drugs, sending dogs going into the school from a reasonable suspicion to a random test. And I, I don't know, is the practice of the principal to announce and advance when they're going to be just searched, done if the administrators request? I assume that that's probably not the practice, so I don't think there really is a danger of the word getting out. The other concern is that there's one Supreme Court case on this issue, 1995, it was New Jersey versus TLO.
What's TLO?
Well, they were abbreviations. It was abbreviations for the name of the, depending on this particular case, but basically there were two criteria that they established. One is that was a search justified as its inception, two was a search as conducted reasonably related to the scope and circumstances which justified the search. I am concerned, my biggest concern frankly, isn't so much of the legalistic issues in this, but it really takes us, it takes our eye off the ball where the real issue is. We need to be creating an environment where kids feel safe, but we also need to create an environment where kids feel trusted and where they are part of the solution. And I'm concerned that we're taking our eye off the ball, that we're focusing on a symptom rather than the underlying problems. This is a conversation we need to be having with parents. I think that's where it starts. The school does act, in some respects, as a parental locus, but I'm very concerned, I checked with Sun Prairie to see what their policy is. They also have what's called a reasonable suspicion criteria. The district staff may conduct a search, when there is reasonable suspicion that a student obtained or has in his possession items that violate the law or school practices. Canines shall not be used to search students unless school officials have established independently that there is reasonable suspicion the student possesses contraband in his or her person. The district administrator must authorize all canine searches. It seems to me that what we have in place is perfectly adequate to doing the job. If there is a concern about drugs in the school, there's nothing to prevent the administrator from asking police doctors to come in unannounced to do a search of the hallways of the lockers. My understanding is the protocol is set up would keep students in the classroom, and they would not be searched, which means if they're going to be carrying it on their person, there's no way of finding out if they have drugs on them. And so the question is, really, is this effective? National studies show that the effectiveness of the dog searches has varied between 44 and 16% accuracy, depending on the amount of training.
Is this, now, are we speaking of school searches or are car searches? Because there's a difference between school searches, particularly in the New Jersey one, is that a school, or was it a car search?
I think they were mixed together, so it is...
So then the data is...
Okay, hang on just a second. We're kind of off the range right now. We don't have a motion, and I think we ought to have a motion before we proceed with any further discussion and dialogue. Point of order from Krista?
I was just, can I make a point about the policy before we make a motion? Is that right or not?
Sure.
I am supportive of random versus reasonable suspicion, because my concern is bias, that I think research shows that, while unintentional, when you use reasonable suspicion, that research shows that minority and non-minority groups use drugs at the same rate, but when you're using a reasonable suspicion, that enforcement, not deliberate, tends to focus on groups that are minority groups. So my concern is that this policy with that one change, I don't think accomplishes what we need to accomplish, because everything is still under the line on occasions of reasonable suspicion. So my preference would be to either supersede this policy and say, for the 2016-17 school year, as a board, we approve the use of a random drug search, because I don't think this change to the policy accomplishes that, because it's still on occasions of reasonable suspicion. So if you're concerned, and that's how I read the policy, and maybe I'm wrong, but...
May I read through it, so that, for the camera?
Sure.
Okay. Although the primary focus of these efforts will be preventative, instructional services, early intervention and support, the building administrator may, on occasions of reasonable suspicion, a violation of the district's student policy and AOD, also employ strategies that focus on the monitoring students in the school environment for the presence of intoxicants, drugs, and/or paraphernalia. Now this is where the change is. These strategies may include, but are not limited, to searches of lockers, personal items, and clothing, searches of student-owned and operated vehicles parked on the school grounds, and the change then comes with the random use of drug-detection canines. So basically, the policy is within the parameters, and there's still reasonable suspicion, but I also agree with you that when it's more random, there's less bias, and my concern...
Okay, hang on now, we're again off-range.
Just a minute, Andrew.
No, no.
Wait a minute, and let me finish, let me finish reading the...
Gwen, stop.
We need a motion to...
I need a motion first, before we have an ongoing dialogue.
I move that we accept the change of policy 436.03.02 to include in the third or second sentence, the word "the random use of drug-detection canines."
So the motion would be to amend 436.03.02, just to insert the word "random" before the phrase "use of drug-detection canines"?
That is correct.
Okay, that's the motion that's on the table. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
I will second it.
Okay, now we can have discussion. I'm gonna start with Dan.
I support the seldom use of random canines, drug detection within the schools as a preventative measure to see whether it helps to keep drugs out of the schools. I think that there's a chance that it might, and if it does work, anybody that we keep from using drugs, I think, is a victory here. The other side of this, of course, I see is a civil liberties issue, where are we searching people, are we invading their privacy through having dogs go through the, through the hallways and sniffing the lockers? Are we showing people that we don't trust them? Are we taking away rights that are given to adults in the society under the Constitution of the United States? I think the cases in the law show that, under the law, we can do this. And...
Chris, oh, I'm sorry.
And I think that we can try it if we do it in the right way, and the, the things that I've heard from Chief Yule and from the administrators is, we don't want to make this into a place where you have to go through a metal detector to come in the school, and you have to be afraid of what you're, what you're carrying with you, or who you're talking to, or being monitored in an oppressive way. And I want to make sure that if we do adopt this policy, that it's not carried out in a way that's going to make students fear or feel that the school is becoming a prison or a place where they're always suspect. We don't want that. There's a line there. We know that there's a drug problem in the school. Sometimes you have to give up some liberties in the small portions as you can in order to gain some security, or in this case, perhaps some, some good, good results for a student or two. So that's in general. Now, in specific, on this specific change, I agree with Krista that this still requires the building administrator to find that there is reasonable suspicion of violation of the district's students' policy, but I think that can be interpreted, and I think if this is the change we want, we should interpret it to mean that they've got to have a reasonable suspicion that somebody in the school may be using drugs. And a reasonable suspicion could come from a teacher saying, "I think I experienced a student who seemed like they were a little bit goofy, or like they may have been taking drugs, or their eyes were bloodshot." Not a specific student, but maybe they get information from a phone call that says, "I know that students in your school have been using drugs in the school." Could be an anonymous phone call. That can also count as reasonable suspicion. Don't have to have, I don't think, reasonable suspicion that a specific student has been using drugs, as you might have in the policy as it's written, because it seems to be focused on one student where you may have a reasonable suspicion. I think if, if the principal believes that there may be drug use by a student in the school, they could then invite the canines in. I don't like to have to stretch the logic of this so far. I would much rather have a whole paragraph devoted to random canine searches, instead of trying to shoehorn it into this, which seems to be written specifically for a particular student, where you can search a particular student if you have a particular reasonable suspicion about that student. I would be more comfortable with having 436.03.02.01, or, you know, add on to the end of this, .10, or whatever it is, that says, besides reasonable suspicion, canine or random canine searches could be used in the schools judiciously, and perhaps saying not more than twice a year per school, but I would want to see whether it's in our policy, or whether it's in an administration policy, some specific guidelines for how these searches are to be conducted, and that could be written by the administration, and they could have it as a handbook, a search handbook, or something like that. We wouldn't have to go through all that. But there's been discussion about whether the searches would include lining up the backpacks in the hallways, and I think that some people have certain objections to that, that might be crossing a line that people don't like. I'd just as soon not have the backpacks searched, I'd just as soon not have any searches, but there's a problem. The problem may, the part of the solution may be canine random searches. I am convinced that they would not harm any student, and we could stop them at any time. I'm ready to try it. I will vote for this motion, but I would like us to revisit it so that these concerns that I have are fixed up, and that I think it would be a better policy if it weren't just changing that one word.
Okay.
I'm gonna start wandering this way, then, Jeff, I haven't heard from you yet.
I have a couple of questions, and the first one is, I would much prefer if a major change such as this had come from committee. So if folks on policy, because I think this was discussed at policy since April, if somebody could explain why this isn't coming from policy, I'd appreciate that.
I'm good explaining. As Chair Policy, I have no objection to having this come to policy, and anybody could have asked to have it on the agenda. I did not suggest that, because I felt, in the end, whatever discussion happens at policy is going to happen all over again here. So I didn't feel, whether it passed policy or not, if it didn't pass policy, so if people have strong feelings about it, it would be appropriate for it to come forward. So I think this is the place to do it.
Thank you.
And I think, I was on policy then too, and there wasn't support of a majority of the policy committee as it was then comprised to bring it forward, and Gwen was in favor of it, and so, you know, she exercised her right as a board member to bring it forward as an independent item to the board, so...
Right, and during that March 1st, I have the minutes from the March 1st Policy Committee in front of me, and there was a lengthy discussion, there was... There was input from administrators and for, from parents and... And it was asked by, to bring all the information to the board and have all information from the Dane County Health Assessment. And so, there was no action taken. But then, things got busy with other things and there was a call for that information. And so, it was sort of, you know, there was a time period of research that needed to be done before we did it. So yes, I am exercising my-
Okay, you have some more points, Jeff.
Yes. I'm also not happy with the wording, merely inserting the one word "random." I think it confuses the policy as it's currently written. So I'm not sure what's gonna happen tonight, but if it is passed, I think we need to address the wording of the policy. A rhetorical question for everybody, or if you feel like answering, of course, you can. My question is, what is the goal of this policy change? I can see it possibly reducing the amount of drugs in the school. But I don't think that's our goal. I think our goal is to reduce drug use of the students. And I'm not convinced this will address that problem. Just something for folks to think about. I would prefer to see a comprehensive program aimed at this problem as opposed to a one-word change to policy. That doesn't mean I'm necessarily against it. But if we want to reduce drug use, you know, kids are in school seven and a half hours a day. They're on their own before school, at lunch, after school, weekends. I'm not sure how this is going to address those times when they could be using drugs. I'm also concerned about the atmosphere it will create, as I think Dan alluded to. That being said, I don't want to put words into Mr. Pliner's or Mr. Bustler's mouths, but I think last fall, when this was discussed, I think Mr. Pliner was in favor of it. And I think Dr. Bustler, if not in favor of it, did not object to it. So if administration could just refresh my memory, is that accurate or not?
It is accurate. We talked about the fact that, as community, you know, it's a tool. It's not the only tool that we look. You'll never find a more student-centered group of administrators, not only at the high school, but I think throughout our district, that are gonna work with kids in any circumstance. I think we did a little bit of homework within our own building, talking to students, introducing it into some classes, and walked away with the sense that our students, by and large, were comfortable with the fact that this was a tool that they didn't consider to be overly invasive. We also discussed that, just in terms of the educational perspective, that, you know, we're not shutting down the hallways for half a day while we're searching locker by locker, that we would be time-bound within. Our suggestion would be that it would be time-bound within a class period and that, you know, we would do our very best to educate community and our students in advance of ever, I think, feeling comfortable where we would roll this out, that, you know, it, we, we're definitely, it's a tool and it's not the only tool. We know that there are ways around detection if somebody is, you know, is seeking to evade that. But we definitely, and I guess I'll speak for myself, I definitely see it as something that we should employ. Thank you.
No, I'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, Jeff, I concur with a lot of what you said. And I thought if I could address a question to Jim as well. Are there things that, in the current policy, which place unreasonable constraints on your requesting a search with a canine unit?
When we have reasonable suspicion of a student being in possession of marijuana or another drug, we typically are able to get to a spot where we can conduct a search without the use of a canine. There is only one kind of example in my memory, when I was at the middle school, where we requested the use of a canine search. And it just wasn't even possible, you know, at that point in time. I think it was the dog's day off or something, or the handler wasn't able to get the dog to the school. So, but by and large, if we have reasonable suspicion, we typically have already, we've got enough there that we're able to kind of figure out whether or not we have something, you know, in the building. And with, working with our ERO, we're usually able to find, if it's a search of a backpack, we don't likely need a drug dog to locate it.
If it's a more generalized concern rather than a specific student that's in question, it seems to me that would provide adequate grounds for-
But not on a school-wide basis. I mean, if I have a specific concern about a smell emanating from a locker, per se, I could, I can open a locker. I can go in there myself and look around. If I kind of got a generalized sense it's in this area, I might be able to, I'd confer with Gina and figure out if I had grounds to call in a canine search unit and conduct as localized.
My biggest concern, Jim, relates somewhat to the point that Jeff had mentioned, that I think in some respects, this takes our eye off the ball in terms of where we really need to be focusing, because as was mentioned, a lot of the time, the students spend is outside school. And we need to be working, I think, with parents and with the community to get drug use down. I'm not sure that this is particularly effective. Some of the things I've read, as I suggested, look at studies of the effectiveness of this as a preventive measure, has been very, very questionable. Given the fact that there are some other issues, I think those are raises. And from my perspective, it really does take the eye off the ball of dealing with issues. I think the critical issue developing trust and relationship with students where this kind of issue will come to form. I had some personal experience when I was directing a spring play, where after the play was over, there was a party at one parent's house where some kids had been involved in using acid. And it was brought to my attention by the students. We're concerned about the students who are involved and generally cared about them and felt this is something that needed to be addressed. And we ended up having a meeting in the gym with Mr. Meissen and Jackie Potter and the entire cast and talking about it. And the kids that were involved basically came forward and acknowledged having used the acid. And it was dealt with, understanding there would be consequences for that. It would seem to me that issue of the trust and relationship of students is critical for having an impact on the youth. And I think that that would be eroded, to some extent, by a random search. I think reasonable suspicion, from my perspective, provides plenty of adequate basis for you, as an administrator, to initiate a search of lockers or hallways, whatever. If there's a rumor or a suspicion that there may be drugs in the school, I don't think you need to pinpoint to a particular student in order to request a search. I mean, that, we have that discussion.
Okay, hang on. This isn't the time for a colloquy back and forth with administration on that problem. Any other points, Charlie?
Well, I guess I would like to just share with the rest of the board some of the things that I've come across in doing some research on this issue.
Okay. Now briefly go through your points.
Well, the critical issues, I think, are basically, there is at least some controversy, uncertainty as to what the law requires. The principal case, which I referred to earlier by the Supreme Court, there are protections against unreasonable search and seizures, and those protections do apply to schools and to students. One was a search justified at its inception. Two was a search conducted reasonably. And, but those are, from my perspective, not the most critical issues. The most critical issue is really, one, does it have the effect that we want? Or does it really take our eye off the ball? Because I think what we really need to be doing, we need to be engaging students, we need to be engaging parents. These issues don't start at school. They end up at school. And I think we need to start dealing with the broad matter source in conversation with parents, conversation with community, conversation with students to address this. Barb?
As I said before, I've always had a concern that we are trying to move in the direction of increasing student autonomy and having them take more responsibility for their own education. And to me, this flies in the face of it. Half of our kids are gonna be legally adults in two years and they can go wherever they want and do whatever they want with drugs. So I don't see it as a cure-all. I am aware that not everybody supports this, speaking of students and parents. And finally, I have a concern about false positives. However, having said all this, I could go along with the proposal, which I thought I heard Krista say, of the board authorizing, using this tool during this school year with the provision that afterwards, the board would get a full report on what happened, what the results were, including false positives. I could live with that for a year. I personally am not ready to modify our policy without having tried it out.
Okay, Gwen?
One thing that I've noticed this evening is that we're talking about usage of drugs and alcohol. My concern is that the schools are safe. And one of the problems that this includes is dealers. There is a whole community accessible. And dealers know that and dealers are young. And I think that, you know, I understand about re-looking at the language, but I also don't understand it because by inserting the one word "random," it gives another tool in that chest to help us with the drug problem. Yes, we have a drug problem. But we can start in the school. And there has been data on saying that, you know, after a while, it's not punitive, it's what the students want. And it helps to create a positive atmosphere of education. You know, and our, again, it's keeping it out of the schools and making it a safe environment for everybody. I also think that the dog, the random use of dogs, and maybe Chief Yule can describe the process for us, is very unobtrusive. And it is... To me, again, it's an effective tool. And we, as a board, have sat before parents and children and students. And we have given them opportunity to follow through with what they want. But I'm concerned about not, I'm concerned about the bias. This opens it up to anybody and everybody. And, you know, it is what it is. And I think we have a beautiful building that's coming along. This is just another part of creating an atmosphere of education that is drug-free and alcohol-free. And if we, as a board, can help administration do their jobs more effectively in an unobtrusive way, I don't have a problem with it. Again, I used to have some of the same concerns that other people have, but not anymore because after thorough investigation, it is unobtrusive. And it is not punitive. It is helpful. And I think that we owe it to our constituents and we owe it to our administrators and we, above all, owe it to our students to help them be the best that they possibly can.
Krista, thanks.
I am still of the belief that this policy change does not accomplish what we are, what Gwen is proposing in terms of random searches. So I would like to see an amendment or something that goes along the lines of what Barb and Dan have talked about, which is something for the 2016 school year in regard to random searches. I don't think this policy change accomplishes what you want to do. And I think that would and would have the support of the board.
Dan?
At this time, I would like to move to amend the motion, unless the mover finds this a friendly amendment. Passed out some language that I would suggest we add. The amendment is that we add this language at the end of 436.03.02. Just make this paragraph longer or we could even put a line break in there, but it would be still under 436.03.02. And the language is, "In addition to the measures that can be used when reasonable suspicion is present, comma, random canine sniff searches of all lockers may be used by the school administrator, but not more than two times in a school year. The random canine sniff searches may only minimally interrupt the regular school schedule of all students." This motion, I believe, would not make this perfect policy, but it would allow the random searches and it would not confuse the issue of the reasonable suspicion with the random searches. So it brings them into separate categories.
So that's the motion.
I would need a second to the motion to amend.
I have a question for that.
Yep.
It's my understanding that the random canine sniffs also include the parking lot and cars. Is that true?
That's correct.
So if we specify only lockers, then we haven't really fulfilled the use of random search. So if we could add random canine sniff searches of all lockers and the parking lot, student parking lot, may be used by the, something like that. And how do you feel about that as a-
Would you consider that a friendly amendment?
Kind of order.
Yeah, Gina?
I would say, what you're proposing, Dan, would not be a friendly amendment to what Gwen has proposed. So Gwen, you could withdraw your motion if you support Dan's motion. And then if it gets a second, make that change as a friendly amendment.
Can you say that again?
Sure. So what Dan is proposing would not be a friendly amendment to your original motion.
Why not?
So because it changes the context of your motion. It changes the wording and the scope. So-
Because I see it as it specifies it, and so it's specific rather than changes.
Well, I mean, ultimately, you get to determine, but I think it would be very confusing to have your paragraph and then have Dan's paragraph at the same time. So I think it would be cleaner for you to withdraw your original motion, let Dan make his motion. If it gets a second, then you could do a friendly amendment to Dan's motion. That accomplishes what I believe you're trying to accomplish.
Can you give me a sec?
Yeah, and before you get there, let's, let's, hang on. I've heard at least a couple of people express the idea that they're comfortable doing this for one year as superseding this policy if we took action, which we would be able to do. I have problems scriveling policy during the meeting because you don't get a chance to look at it in black and white, to vet it, to go back and forth and to realize unexpected consequences of words. Okay? I have discussed this particular issue twice before with boards. And you guys know my position. I, I'm not a fan of random drug searches or sniffs. But that being, for a lot of different reasons. And, you know, I've got an open mind in terms of whether or not, for me, the cost benefit is worth it. in terms of whether or not, for me, the cost benefit is worth it. I'm willing to do this for a year without changing the policy to authorize the administration to work with the police department for a year to try it and to see what issues we have, to see if it's effective, and to monitor that. We can accomplish that by just a board motion authorizing them, notwithstanding 436.03.02. That would give us a chance to do it like Krista said, and I think Barb as well. Give us a chance to implement it for a year without changing policy and get feedback. And then have a broader discussion about, okay, what did we see? What were the positive, what were the negatives? So that we can then, with that experience base, draft a policy if we want to move in the direction of permanently allowing random drug sniffs. So that's my thought process right now. And it's a compromise off of a pretty strongly held view in terms of, I think there's a bigger cost than people put to it. But that's a personal preference. But, okay, so having said that, I'm going to walk through it and see what reactions there are to that, going from Jeff all the way through.
Well, as I said before, I wish this would have come from policy for the reasons that you just gave is I don't like writing policy as a board.
Point of order, we've got a motion and no second on the table. Can we, like, take care of what's before us here before we talk about whatever your thoughts are?
Sure. That's the proper parliamentary procedure. So is there a second to Dan's motion, which is this language? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. So now we can proceed, Jeff?
I'm, this has been a difficult decision for me. Ultimately, I value the opinion of our administrators a great deal. And given what they've said, I would be willing to try it. As you said, Steve, perhaps it'd be most prudent to pass a motion tonight that gives administrators the ability to do this for the 1617 school year, get feedback, and put it into policy after we've learned something from that experience.
Gina, as a point of order, that's not an amendment. That seems to need to be a new motion. But can that motion take the form of an amendment?
Well, the way, the way I'm looking at it right now was that Gwen's allowing Dan to have a friendly amendment to her motion because otherwise we have two motions on the floor. So right now, I'm looking at it that Dan's motion is the only motion on the floor. So you either amend.
Okay, well, we've got to clarify then whether Gwen accepts this as a friendly amendment.
I was taking it that she did because she was challenging my decision. And it's ultimately her call if it's friendly.
I can't accept it without including the parking lot.
Okay, so.
Then we have a problem because we have two motions on the floor.
Then we have an improper, Dan's motion's out of order.
Yes, so we have to discuss Gwen's motion and have a vote before we can consider Dan's motion.
The motion is to amend, and it doesn't have to be a friendly motion, a friendly amendment.
Your motion is to amend Gwen's wording?
By adding that at the end, Dan?
By adding that at the end and getting rid of, basically, the word that she had suggested we add to this paragraph and adding these other words.
Then we have to have a vote on the motion to amend.
Right, but, but he has a motion. He's considering it a motion to amend by taking out the word random, as I understand it, and instead inserting the paragraph you have here.
Right.
And that has a second. And as a point of order, you as parliamentarian, is that a proper motion to amend on the table?
It's.
Just hang on, I'm asking the parliamentarian, the view.
It is.
Okay, so we have a proper motion to amend on the table with a second that takes priority over Gwen's motion at this point. And so we're having discussion on that. And Charlie, you had the floor.
I have to speak briefly. My underlying concern remains the same with both of them. I did second the motion for a purpose of conversation. But if I understand correctly, the protocol for the searches that would be done is that they would be done, basically, of hallways and lockers, that students would be kept in the classroom, and the classrooms themselves would not be searched. Is that, is that correct?
Would you like us to talk about how the searches would work?
Well, I guess.
I don't think right now is the point for.
Can I call a question?
Well, let me, if I may just.
You can ask if the question be called. And then you need a second for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to call the question and a second. And it's not debatable. And so we need a super majority vote. So it's got to have five.
So tell, tell us what we're voting on.
The motion is, the question that's called is Dan's amendment to the policy.
So if you vote yes, then we have to move straight to the vote on my amendment.
So it's a motion to vote on Dan's?
To stop debate, basically. It's a motion to stop debate. We have to have five votes in order to do that.
Okay, and so we've got a motion and a second. That's what we call the roll.
I just want to clarify, it's to stop debate on Dan's motion, not the general topic.
Thank you.
So voting yes would mean stopping debate and voting on Dan's motion.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff?
No.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Ms. Maitzen?
No.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, and that motion fails. So we have discussion.
My underlying concern is that frankly, both of these proposals do not really address the underlying problem. Students who are aware that searches are going to be conducted, presumably could and would keep contraband on themselves, which not going to be subject to search in the classroom when they're locked. So the issue of drugs in the schools does not seem to be effectively addressed by what is being proposed. My concern is, basically, we still need to address, what I feel is the underlying issue, which is developing a kind of relationship with students and with teachers, kind of information, where we can actually deal with the issue rather than just the symptom. Because this is basically trying to, trying to deal with the symptom. And I don't think it does much of anything to actually address the problem of drug use. And that's my concern.
Okay. Any further discussion on Dan's motion that's on the table, which is to amend Gwen's motion? Barb, anything? Gwen?
I would like, Chief Yule?
Well, no, this is the time for board discussion on the motions.
I think that the, I think that the school board is dragging its feet on this issue. Yes, it's a symptom. But we have a tool here. Drugs are in our schools, drugs are in our community, drugs are in our society. It's big business. And, and if we can keep it out of our, this school, OMS and OHS, it's becomes, I don't, it becomes a deterrent. And people know that they can't bring it to school. I think that's the objective, Charlie. We are not going to be able to stop the drug problem. It is here. This is just one tiny thing to do. And, you know, if it stops, if it scares off a dealer from coming into the school and getting somebody hooked, you know what? It takes one drop of some of our substances now, and people are hooked. One. And so, and if it's in the schools, you know, let's get it out of the school. It's a starting point. And I think that, you know, in essence, we do, we are playing a little bit antics with semantics, which is a stall tactic, as far as I'm concerned. And we, the administrators, asked for this months ago. And here we are, talking about it ad nauseam. And I'm also disappointed that none of my colleagues bothered to call me up to discuss this about rewriting it before we even had it. This was on your agenda for a while. And so, you know, it's like, here we are, rehashing the hash. And I think it's very simple. There are people who want this. I'm going to say it again and again. Administrators want it, the students want it, the parents want it. There are issues that can be a sticky wicket, I get it. That's what stopped me from doing it initially. But after all the research, and if we can help one student stay in school and get off of something, or not be tempted by a dealer, then we have done our job. Hopefully, it's more students. This is the issue here, folks. It's not antics with semantics. I say, let's go ahead and pass it as is. And then the policy committee can discuss the change word for another action item down the road. We've stalled it with a mental, you know, looking at the Dane County survey. We've stalled it now here with, you know, antics with semantics. Come on, what more do you need?
Krista?
Anything for me?
Dan, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to address Charlie's issue. And I agree with you, Charlie. This is not a standalone thing. This is not the solution. But it's only a part of the policy, only changing a small part of it. We want to have a comprehensive substance abuse and alcohol problem policy, which is what we've been trying to develop over the years as a board. We just want to add this small part in there and not say that this is the silver bullet, the golden ticket. This is what's going to get all the drugs out of the school. It's certainly not. It's just another tool that we would allow the administration to use in order to do what they think is best for the students. And we can revisit this at any time in the future. I personally would like to see us pass the amendment so that we can get what I think is some better language in there. And if we can pass this amendment, then we can add the parking lot in there after. We can do it all in this meeting. But I encourage people to vote for this amendment so that we can get something in the policy. Because I do also agree with Gwen, this has been dragged out a lot. And we've talked about it a lot, and we've looked at a lot of different things.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to your amendment to add the parking lot?
Can we do that?
You can if it's friendly.
I, I believe that it is friendly, and I would accept that.
Please a second?
I second.
Do you accept that as friendly?
I do.
I think Charles actually was the second for my motion.
Well, I was seconding the motion, but then also made an amendment to your amendment.
All right, so you were asking who the second for my motion was?
Yes.
It was Charles.
Yeah, I was second.
Do you accept that as friendly?
Yes.
So what?
So right now, what's wonderful is the motion to amend Gwen's motion using the language Dan handed out with the addition of all lockers and cars.
Student parking lot, I think.
Student parking lot. So you're only voting on a motion to amend. You still have to vote on the main motion.
A motion to amend, is this all lockers and cars and the student parking lot?
No, I think it's just the student parking lot.
The problem we have there is we have a parking lot that is dedicated to both faculty and student use, which is the problem with scrivening policy at a board, folks. So anyway, so the, I, I need to know what the friendly amendment is.
The friendly amendment was to add student parking lot to the language that Dan had offered. But frankly, you've raised a very good question, Steve. In terms of making the school safe, are teachers' cars also subject to search?
Okay, right now, I'm just, I'm just looking for what you are proposing as a friendly amendment.
The friendly amendment was to add student parking lot to the language that Dan had.
And was that accepted? Okay, so we've got a motion on the table to add after lockers and student parking lot. Okay, anything more, Dan?
No.
Okay, I'm going to vote no on the motion to amend because I have concerns about the language of it. I have real question about student parking lot and what that means. I don't like having a number in terms of random search because once you hit the number, now you've eliminated the efficacy of it in the future. And I don't know what the phrase minimally interrupt the regular school schedule means. Okay? And so I'm going to vote no. And so now's the time. Everybody's had a chance to discuss this. And I think we vote on the amendment. I guess I, my, my view is, I've got two positions. One is I'm not going to vote on the amendment because I just don't think it's the proper process to change our policy. And I think there's different ways to do that. I just also have a broader philosophical concern with the searches. We are going to hopefully adopt a paper this evening that talks about our vision for the future. And to me, this flies in the face with the type of culture that that paper envisions. So this way, would you call the roll on the motion to amend?
Gwen's motion.
Gwen's motion. And that is Dan's written document that includes then students' parking lot after lockers. Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
No.
Ms. Flanagan?
No.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
No. Motion carries 43. And I don't know that we need to go, well, that's, yeah. Now we've got to go to, now we have to go to the main motion, which is, that's the motion to amend. So the motion on the table then is to change policy 436.03.02 with this language. Okay?
Inclusive of what's here with that language?
No, because the motion.
Yeah, inclusive of that, but not the word random.
Correct, it was already amended.
So 46.03.02 stays the same as it is, but this except the addition of.
Right, and within the amended thing, it does have random, so we've covered it.
It has random in what Dan wrote, but your random is gone. That was amended. It's what Dan wrote, that's what.
I understand that, as long as the random is there. And we can then reconvene and discuss wording again down the road.
Okay, so that's the motion. Dan, do you have any further comments?
No.
Krista?
No.
Gwen?
No. Barb?
My comment is, I'm going to vote no. And I hope that we will have the opportunity to consider another motion which would allow searches during, for this school year. But I want to caution people on the parking lot issue because I come to the high school and I park in that lot. And I'm sure other people do too, including faculty. And I would be extremely concerned if members of the public or faculty are subject to having their cars searched with darkness.
Charlie?
I have, I will be voting against the motion.
Jeff?
Could somebody please clarify exactly what this vote is?
The vote is to amend 436.03.02 with the language that Dan has.
Didn't we just vote on?
That was the motion to amend Gwen's motion. So we amended Gwen's motion to include this language and to remove random. So we're voting on the substance of the change to authorize random searches along the lines of.
Do you have any further comments?
No. Okay, I, again, am really concerned about this language if we adopt this as policy because I think it creates problems. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
No.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
No.
Mr. Upka?
No.
Mr. Zach?
No. The motion to amend, or the motion on the policy change is defeated four to three. Ms. Flanagan?
I would like to move that we, as a board, allow for the 2016-17 school year, the use of random searches with canines. That would then not be policy, it would be something that would come back to the board after for review, so then we can make further decisions on the continued use of random canine searches.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Would you accept as a friendly amendment, it would be to authorize the use of canines for random drug sniffs, to be implemented in consultation with administration?
Yes.
Okay. The parameters of that, okay, so would you accept that as?
I would. I'd like to, I guess my question is, does this include the parking lots?
With no qualifier on parking lots. So can we say-
Because there shouldn't be drugs in any of these kinds-
So can we say school buildings and grounds? Does that cover?
I'm just writing down so that I've got the motion. Okay. So, as I've got the motion, it would be to authorize the use of random drug detection canines for the 2016-27 school year pursuant to procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department.
Say it one more time.
The motion to authorize the use of random drug detection canines, which is using the same language in here, for the 2016-2017 school year pursuant to procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department.
So it doesn't qualify, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't qualify that, but certainly that would be a factor in the conversations between how are we going to deal with cars and that sort of stuff, and let them work that out. And then that would be part of the discussion, I think, we would have when we review this at the end of sixteen seventeen.
Yes.
Okay. That's the motion, it has a second. Discussion, Dan?
I have a concern, and maybe Gina, you can answer this. It seems that this motion would allow actions contrary to our current policy. But if we are making that as a general motion in a meeting, can we supervene policy that has been published? Because people who come to our district have a reasonable right to rely on the written policy without having to search through every minute of every meeting to know whether they're subject to search. I don't think that this motion is a legal motion that we can pass and have it, actually enact it. We need to make a policy here if we're gonna have this done, not just have a regular motion at a meeting. What do you think, Gina?
So I'm looking at it like you are amending that policy for the sixteen seventeen school year, and you're right that we would publish what is done here today on the website with that policy, so that people would be aware of the change for the sixteen seventeen school year.
But that wasn't the motion.
Well, we would, whatever action is taken tonight, we would publish that on the web with that policy. I don't know that you need to say that in the motion, you certainly can, but that is what we would do anyway.
I think there's a difference between action by the board and changing policy, so I think it should be clear in the motion that we are moving to actually change the policy.
What you could do is, the motion could be to amend four thirty-six oh three oh two to include the language that for the 2016-27 school year, the random use of drug detection canines can be used pursuant to procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department. You know, so you've got a policy that has language in it that's only applicable to sixteen seventeen. That's one way you could get around your problem, Dan. I don't think there is a problem, but-
Right, and you're the same body that changes the policy, so it's the same decision-making body. If you want it completely clean, that would be a route to do it. But I don't feel it's necessary, given the motion on the floor.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to authorize the use of random drug detection canines for the 2016-27, twenty seventeen school year pursuant to procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department. Is there any other discussion, Dan? And we've got your point on the efficacy of that relative to the policy, but any other points?
Yeah, well, I just wanna reiterate that I'll vote against this unless we specify in the motion that it's a policy change. Another point that I would like to make is it sounds a lot like the motion that just was voted down, and it's gonna start another drafting back and forth here as to whether or not we wanna include the parking lots, or whether that's a good idea, or do we want to subject our teachers to searches, or do we wanna subject the public to searches, or do we need to post at the entrance to the school grounds whether by entering here, you may be subject to a random search, a random drug search by the Oregon Police Department? I think all of these things are things that we need to be concerned about. Having said that, if the motion were to say that we wanna change the policy for one year, I would vote for that, because I think that it's something that we should try. I don't think that the way that the motion is put out though is correct or proper, even though we've got the assurance that it will be published alongside the policy.
Krista, anything?
Nothing.
Gwen?
My concern is, is that people are not understanding that the, this isn't, the police department doesn't come in like a SWAT team. And that's what it sounds like, that they will be randomly searched whenever they come in the building. It only, with the drug search, the sniffer dogs, it only happens once or twice. And I would wish that we would allow Chief Yule to explain how this works to everybody, and we could end the discussion, because I feel like it's becoming very circular. And one of the things that we're all worried about, the wording, et cetera, and I think that I think we're overreacting. And I think that studying it, there's plenty of studies out there. I'm disappointed that the motion that I put before the board didn't pass, and I think that we, as elected officials, need to start listening to our constituents and not worry about our own agendas.
Barb?
Nothing to add.
Charlie? Anything, Dan?
Just following up a little bit on the concern that Dan raised, I think there is some concern with the ambiguity in the motion that was presented, that if the grounds or parameters of the search are determined by discussions between the police department and administration, doesn't make clear that we're in fact obligated to follow the other parts of the rules with the policies just currently in place. So you don't wanna have a situation where those other policies might be contradicted by decisions that are based on discussion.
John?
Two things. People have been mentioning, one of the potential benefits is safer schools, and obviously, schools with fewer or no drugs are safer. One of the questions I had in my mind regarding the original motion tonight was, if we're concerned about the entire school, why were we limiting the searches to just students? So, I'm kinda happy about this new language, which would not necessarily restrict things just to students. That being said, I'm wondering if this runs afoul of the employee handbook. I mean, I don't know what the expectations are of staff regarding drug searches. I can't answer that, if anybody else wants to comment.
Okay. As matters stand right now before this vote, we're status quo on our policy that requires reasonable suspicion. You've had, now have a motion on the table that allows exactly what you wanted, although be it for one year, to see how it works out, and to try to develop language if it works out well, to move forward. And so it accomplishes exactly what you want in terms of the language of, "procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department," well, that was gonna happen anyway with respect to the prior two motions that got voted down, so that's nothing different than, it's something we do all the time, is we enact policy, which is, in this case, one year, we'll take a look and see how it goes, and we turn it over to the administration to implement it, and they're gonna implement it consistent with board policies on the table and employee handbook. So, I think that satisfies some of the concerns that have been raised. Okay. Would you please call the rule? And the motion is to authorize the use of random drug detection canines for the 2016-17 school year-
Steve, you have a question?
You have a question?
Yes. Chief Yule, is this amenable to you?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the use of random drug detection canines for the sixteen seventeen school year pursuant to procedures agreed to between administration and the Oregon Police Department. Janie, would you call the rule?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Upka? Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, motion carries five, two. Okay, so Brian, you and the administrative team will work with Chief Yule and his department for the 2016-17 school year, and we will have you report to the policy committee with what we've learned, so that we can consider that. Okay?
Do you have a month that you would like us to report back?
Let, we will be in contact, I think, if we set a month, we start targeting when we're gonna do the random searches.
Well, I was thinking, June.
Okay. Yeah, you can do that.
June of 2017, because then the board will have feedback on our findings from the searches, and you have two months to make a decision before the beginning of September 2017 school year.
Okay. Why don't we do that, and Janie, have the minister reflect that, that the mass, the motion passed, and that administration will report back in June of 2017? Thanks, we're moving on to item D two, preliminary budget 2016-27, and-
Mr. President, could I just ask one thing be added to the minutes? The understanding was that this motion that was passed is going to be published with the procedures on our website, or with our policies?
Yes.
So that we know that that's gonna happen?
Yeah, thanks, Dan, Janie, you got that. Okay. Preliminary approval, preliminary sixteen seventeen budget, and as we had indicated, this is a preliminary consideration, but a necessary step to be able to publish the preliminary budget for purposes of the presentation and approval at the annual meeting, or the presentation at the annual meeting. And approval, okay. Andy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hopefully, I had to change the read the agenda item, I tried to give a kind of a nice narrative to it. As President Zach just mentioned, this is just a necessary procedural thing that we have to do. We've built the budget based on the information that we've talked about throughout the spring, based on basically staffing. Budgets have been pretty much frozen at the departmental level and at the school level on a per-student basis. So, all those models are in the smaller packet that you have before you. When we get to the original budget, the budget increases about five or sixfold, and we give you a lot more attachments, but we're not quite prepared to provide those at this point in time. If this is approved this evening, what happens is there's an advertisement, it's actually the end of the packet, the end of the agenda item, the attachment that's a DPI format, kind of bland, if you would, but it says Oregon School District Budget Adoption, and it starts on page eight of the agenda item. That would then go into the Oregon Observer for publication, actually this week. It has to be in the paper ten days prior to the annual meeting, so this is kind of our window of opportunity to do that. It is not final, obviously, the preliminary probably leads to that conclusion. We have to wait until our third Friday counts are done, and other information such as their equal assess value and state aid is certified, all huge components of how the budget actually operates. Those things, our third Friday is actually this next Friday, it's the third Friday of the school year, so we'll be working on that information after that date. It's not, we get to that day and we immediately know it, it takes a couple days to still look through the records of everything, but we'll have a pretty good idea probably by the end of next week where we are on that. The state aid estimate is later in October, as well as the EAV is later September to the beginning of October. So, those things, for the most part, don't determine our spending plans, they basically just determine our levy and our levy rate, which is needed to certify for municipalities. So, that being said, I thought I would talk about my favorite sheet, I haven't used that phrase for a while.
It hasn't been a long time, Andy.
It has been a long time, but it's one page that kinda tells you everything that's going on in the district at a very, very high level, and that's page one, after the table contents. So I'm gonna quickly go through that, hit some high spots of how that works, and then maybe just be available for questions if anybody has any. So, the very top of this paper, it has kind of an orange and a white thing going on in it. This is a general fund, that's our main operating fund of the district, where the majority of our expenses come from. Anything that I don't talk about down below is all in there. And you can see that the fund balance is broken out on the left side, that's kind of what we start with. We move to the right in all these columns with how much revenue we're gonna anticipate for this year, minus the expenditures, plus or minus any transfers, and there's only one basic transfer that happens, I'll talk about that, and then at the end of the year, what we would anticipate having is an ending fund balance. Fund balance is a little bit of a tricky term, it does mean a lot of different, or it does mean something, not exactly what's left in your checking account, because there are assets in there, such as land, and those types of things that can be in there if they're in inventory for our school construction house, for instance, but for the most part, it is cash, the great majority of it. Fund balance is also something that is in a point in time. You'll see that when I mention fund balance on this, there are dates. There are dates, or there are times during the school year that the school district is very cash poor, that typically for us is in November, December, depending on where cash receipts come from, the state, and when our payrolls hit. So, on the left side for the general fund, you can kind of see some things that we've talked about in the past. Building departmental carryover is a dollar amount, that means that those are budgets that were not spent this last year, it's fairly significant, $442,000. A number of years ago, this board allocated some fund balance toward the Director of Curriculum for some curriculum projects. You can see that those funds are still there, the next two items is fifteen sixteen instructional carryover, and then the virtual obstruction carryover there. And then the assigned technology infrastructure, that was about three years ago, we did a significant upgrade to our wireless infrastructure in our school district, and those payments are coming out over five years, so you can see that we make one more payment this year, or two more payments in the next two years, and then that service will be, or that obligation will be fulfilled. You see the rub- You see the revenues of $43 million, expenditures of $39 million, which is always good to have more revenue than expenses, but we also have this transfer that's going on of $4.6 million. That's because of the Special Education Fund, Fund 27. That is not, this is basically how the Department of Public Instruction set it up. It does have its own revenue streams, but it doesn't make up all that it needs in order to fund operations. So, there has to be a transfer so that the Special Education Fund equals zero at the end of the year. So, that's just basically a plug-in from Fund 10 to Fund 27 of $4.6 million. And then, that brings us back to Fund 10 of approximately $10.7 million, which if you were to take all those assigned fund balances out, except the $120,000 that's left for one more year of the technology infrastructure expenditures, you'll get to the $10.7 million. So, if you would take that out, we're at approximately a fund balance of about $10.5 million. Does that make sense to everybody on Fund 10? Okay. Donations, gifts, this is Fund 21. This is kind of all the student-run activities for the most part, but it's also when people wanna give a gift that might not be spent over one year. So, but for the most part, these are activities that the school district directs. It does, these funds don't have a president or treasurer necessarily. Staff members are making decisions, those types of things. They used to be called activity funds, but DPI made us recategorize them, and so, it's actually in there. It is a guess on our part, has to know how much revenue and expenses we'll make, because there are lots of different moving parts to it. So, we always anticipate revenues equal expenses and anticipate a fund balance at the same amount that we started the year with. Fund 27, I already mentioned, there are two lines there. You'll see grants, and then special education. There are some different revenues that connect to those different things, and you can kinda see those. Special education non-grant money, I believe, is categorical reimbursement that we get from the state of Wisconsin, which is a high 20 percent rate. So, that's what the revenue is for that. Non-referendum debt, that is mainly a couple things that, roofing project was still being paid on. It was a 0 percent interest loan that happened in the American Recovery Act 2008 that we got from the federal government. Basically, we're paying off about a $600,000 roofing project at the middle school over time, and then we're also paying some projects that we did at J.C. Park East. And then, the last thing that's in there is payments for our unfunded liability with the WRS. So, those three things compose the basically half million dollars of expenditures. Those funds are included within our revenue limitation formulas, so they are limited. That's why they didn't go through a referendum process. Debt service Fund 39, that, those expenditures did go through a referendum process, and those are outside of our revenue limit, and they total a little over $4 million that you can see, and that's related to the referendum that we passed a few years ago, plus some other referendums that are still on books. Revenue, referendum bonds, so this is, you don't see a lot of revenue there. These are the bonds that basically, the balance that was left over once we sold them. So, the line item before is paying for those bonds. These are the proceeds from those bonds that we got in 2014. And you can see that we're spending that down as construction happens. So, you have a small amount of revenue in there, which is related to interest earnings that we're, we'll be receiving in the next year, anticipate receiving. Food service is a standalone fund. Revenues need to equal expenses. It is not taxpayer-supported, and you can kinda see that we typically have been budgeting revenues equal expenses there. That's always our goal. Having a little bit of fund balance left over is a good thing in case we have unexpected repairs or replacements of equipment, which do happen, but for the most part, that's just there. Revenues should equal expenses. We shouldn't be making a profit. We shouldn't be losing money. Last year, as a little bit of a highlight to the annual meeting, we, I think, cleared about $4,000 more than we expended. So, on that size of a budget, that's pretty darn close. Employee trust fund and the OPEB fund, the employee trust fund is related to employee benefit when they retire. Their cyclically conversion is converted into dollars. Those are dollars that we hold in trust for the employee and work the individual arrangements out for the employee, how those funds are spent. Typically, in this case, they're used for health insurance purposes. The OPEB liability is basically a pre-funding arrangement where we try to pre-fund a liability that exists for certain employees for a health insurance benefit that extends after retirement. So, we've been trying to basically get to fully fund that. We're about at half of our liability right now. We've made significant headway over the last 10 years. Community education fund, you may recall, we transferred a lot of money out of that fund last summer. It's supposed to actually have a zero balance. That's why you see the zeros on the right-hand side. We didn't spend all the money that we levied this last year or collected, and that's why we have a balance of about $39,000. By law now, we're required to reduce our expenditures, our levy by the amount of money that we collected this last year above our expenses. So, the levy is basically lower than it was last year for community ed. We break them out into three different components. We've always done that historically, but from DPI's point of view, they see it as one thing. Community ed is community ed. We do track it differently, and you do see that the pool fund had actually overspent their money, the other funds underspent. So, it kind of obviously balances out in the end. Cooperative purchases fund, that's Carl Perkins. It's a federal grant, and we worked with a couple different school districts to facilitate that between us. Greg Granberg, School Work Coordinator, does that for our district. So, about $147,000 grant between these other districts. So, that's very large, high-level budget presentation. I will just briefly show, tell you what the next pages are. I won't get into them unless you have questions. We talked about revenues. We break those down a little bit by each fund, and then we also talk a little bit about how those revenues come from. The next sheet is actually the Department of Public Instruction, slightly modified for our expenses, to show that we anticipate a general state aid of almost $20 million this next year. The next sheet is our revenue limit, which basically directs the expenditures for the entire district, are from the education fund, the majority is the education fund, and that is just a complicated formula that deals with enrollment for the most part of resident students, and works its way through and then creates a mill rate at the end. The next sheet talks a little bit about our equal assess values, and it's a historical way to demonstrate that information, and also shares what we anticipate on the EAV to be for 2016, as well as some anticipated mill rates. Then, we get into expenses, again, a sheet very similar in format, but a little bit different categories than the revenue, but in the expense format. We then get into the preliminary budget tier. Now, this is how we allocate funds to our elementary, middle school, and high school, and so, we're happy to go through that if you want, but basically, there, on the bottom sheet, it talks about a certain dollar amount per student, and then the top part of the sheet basically does the math to calculate balances for the schools, doing what their budgets are. So, all the schools get a certain dollar amount, and the bottom sheet describes how that was calculated, and the top describes what those balances are. The top also talks about any revenues that the schools brought in the prior year, and we allocate those to the schools the following year so that they don't have to worry about how much they collected in one year. They basically get the amount of money they collected the prior year into this next year's budget, so they don't have to worry about revenues. They're just working in on the expense side. The next couple pages is basically the same, similar format from the orange pages that we had above, but basically in the Department of Public Instruction's format, which is maybe not as readable as what we had provided you above, but what we really required to provide you to the paper. So, with that being said, I'll entertain any questions.
Andy, I'll start and walk through if anybody has any questions. What are you looking at for projected FTE increase this year? Is it 82?
So, on the resident's side, if you go to page four, which is our revenue limit...
Yep.
I believe the increase is anticipated to be 48.
Three-year ago.
Yep. The 30, now that's a three-year average. So, you know, we get into this thing sometimes of what, when we're talking about students, believe me, there are many ways to count students. There are heads, how many heads there are. 4K students are counted as a .6 in this formula. So, that's obviously different than a head. So, because they don't go to school the full day, we only get the key, a counterpart portion of them. For the most part, other than that, everybody's a head. But then, we have open enrollment students, and so, there are kids in this membership number that don't go to school here, and then there are kids that do go to school here that aren't in that number. So, it's kind of the reverse of what you would think, but our residents go to other schools. We get to count them on this sheet. Residents, or people that come to our school that are residents of other school districts, we don't get to count, but we get an aid payment from those districts directly.
In terms of the body and seats, what are you forecasting?
Right around 4,000 is what we think.
Okay, but what's the increase from last year in terms of your projections?
Off the top of my head, I would say we're probably in that 80 to 100 range.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the total FTEs, and I know that's not bodies and seats necessarily, but that's 82, but...
Right.
That gives us the ballpark?
Yep.
Okay. Last year was in the 70s, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
And this is, as we said in the agenda item above, it is a little bit of aggressive. We have balanced from our preliminary projections in the spring. We've kinda rebalanced a little bit, but we're still kinda thinking, I mean, this is doable, but it's a little bit on the aggressive side.
Okay. And if we're working, if it stays that way, are we gonna be adding a contingency budget? I mean, is the lack of a contingency budget the function of a tight budget, or we just don't, we haven't been spending it, so I'm gonna allocate it elsewhere?
I would say actually both.
Okay.
We needed to, in order to make the numbers work, after we got done doing salaries, we were a little over, and so, we had to figure out a way to balance, and we hadn't been using that contingency budget, so we used that and another budget, which is capital equipment, basically balanced the budget.
So, if we hit numbers of students in or go above, then that, we have a little playroom. We could, one of the options is, in when we consider the final budget, is to restore the contingency budget?
Absolutely. That could be an option.
Okay. Good. One thing that I noted was that, under the preliminary budget, the mill rate will drop down to potentially, in terms of your estimates, 1132, which is almost 80 points less than the prior year, and that if the referendum passes, the impact on the mill rate would be, our mill rate would still be lower than it is this year?
That's correct.
Okay. And if I'm looking at this right, in terms of our expenditure budget, general fund 10 is really our operational budget, taking out special ed stuff, and we're at just a 2 percent, 2.6 percent increase in our budget, and that includes all the health insurance costs and all the other employment costs that we have. So, we'd be running at about a 2/6 in our budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Dan, any questions on the budget?
Yeah, Andy, the $39,000 in the community fund, that's from last year, just to clarify, that's money we could have spent but didn't.
We anticipated, we had budgeted for, we had levied for, but didn't get spent.
So, we're more or less being penalized for not spending that money by not being able to levy for it?
Yeah, we're not being penalized necessarily. Basically, the new law requires that we can't have a balance in that account. So, if you budget for something and it doesn't come in, the money's still in your account, it's just that basically you can't levy for that again until you have a levy to levy for it. So, you're not being penalized, and if we, if all of a sudden we said we wanted another project in community ed and it increased the budget, and the board was, wanted that budget and wanted to levy for it, they could. They're not limited by it, but they're basically saying there shouldn't be a balance, kinda like special education, there shouldn't be a balance at the end, and instead of giving the money back to the fund 10 budget, basically what happens is you have to under levy to get to zero.
Got you. So, the taxpayers are benefiting...
Yep.
...by us spending more wisely than we thought we would...
Yep.
...in that area.
It goes back directly to the tax bill, yeah.
In this year?
Yep.
Okay. Great. The non-referendum debt, I think if I remember right, that's where we are paying that, or we're segregating fund balance to pay that down, so then it's not gonna be in the operating budget for the next year?
So, that's part of the employee compensation system that we talked about, and I'm not supposed to talk about the rabbit pack, but I will.
You just did.
Yeah, I know. Thought I'd get a look out of you. But yes, basically what we're doing is a part of that. Now, that line item there, that $525,000, is actually three different debt service payments that I mentioned before, but the majority of it is our WRS funded liability, and that's the money that will be taken out of fund balance and setting aside to pay those payments till 2022 or 2023, I believe.
So, how is this gonna look different next year?
On the, let me think about that for a second.
If everything passes.
It basically would not look any different. Those line items for Fund 38 would not look any different. You would see on the general fund, the part on the top there, you would see probably a line item where it says assigned technology infrastructure. You'd say something, you'd see something that says committed to Fund 38 payments, and you'd have a $1.6 million number. I'm picking holes, it might not be exact. But up on general fund, you'd see a line item that would say, under Fund 10, where it says all those assigned numbers, you'd see committed, I believe, is the terminology if the board did that, and there'd be a line item that would show that dollar amount for that purpose. And then, down below, you'd still see the revenues and expenses, just like you see right now.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Great, thanks, Dan. Krista?
Nothing for me.
Gwen?
I have a question on page seven and on page nine. Let's go to page seven first. I just wanted to make some clarifications, and I know that this is a little nitpicky, and I apologize, but I have a special place in my heart for Oasis and Oasis Night School. A few weeks ago, it was noted that in the Oregon Observer that rent for Oasis was $20,000, when in my understanding is $40,000?
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. And then, $20,000 out of the Oasis budget pays for Plato?
That I'd have to check, but that sounds right.
Okay. And so, then that leaves $8,798,000 for instructional usage by the...
So, I'd have to double-check this, but my recollection is that the rent payments are not in this formula here. We're paying that separately. I'm fairly confident of that.
Okay. I would like you to check on that, because I thought previously it was part of that budget, because then, because the Oasis budget is pretty small for students?
So, this is how we establish the budget that the high school manages, so I could find out real quickly, because the high school budget guru is actually in the room, Mr. Pliner. Do you budget for Oasis rent payments?
No, I don't.
So, where does that come from?
So, then I budget for that in a different place within the budget. It's outside of this model.
That's a change in previous years, then?
No, it would be the same. If the high school doesn't budget for it, then I do.
Okay. So, then that is budgeted in what you've written on page seven?
The 40,000, the $68,798 for Oasis and the night school, the 20,000, so the total of $88,7, goes to Mr. Pliner, and Mr. Pliner then develops the budget for those schools based on those amounts.
Okay, 'cause I'm concerned about instructional budget. Okay. Also on page nine, and this is just a reminder for me, because, you know, if I have problems going to sleep, I just look at this, and I don't have a problem anymore. So, the fund balance, or the funds, can you please tell me, it's my understanding that the expenditures of instruction and support services come out of Fund 10? Is that correct? Like salaries?
For the most part, yeah. Food services would...
Is different.
They come out of food services, correct?
Within the, so that would be in curriculum instruction, the salaries come out of Fund 10. come out of Fund 10?
Curriculum instruction, absolutely, yes.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. I just wanted to clarify that in my own mind.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions, Gwen?
And if you could get that, well, it's not a question, it's a statement.
Yeah.
If you could get that information about Oasis, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I'll double check that.
Because my recollection is, what I'm hearing tonight is different than what I heard before. But that's okay. So we'll just clarify it.
Okay.
Barb?
Charlie?
Yeah, I had the same question you had, Steve, about the contingency. Also had a question about whether the fund balance or the balance for food services is impacted by what we're seeing in typically some increases in eligibility for free and reduced lunch? Does that have an impact?
It does. How do I say this? In the food service world, a higher free and reduced percentage, because those kids are more apt to eat, actually helps the food service fund. Because we get a certain amount of money based on, based on those students eating. And since they're more apt to eat, because the option is not taking, we make, we get funds from those. So it's not something that we obviously desire, but it does have a positive impact in operations of food service. So those districts that have a higher percentage than us typically have a stronger fund balance or stronger food service fund than the
But we shouldn't be actually looking for a decrease in free and reduced lunch.
No, absolutely not. No. Not something we look forward to, but it is one of the offshoots of it, I guess.
Anything else, Charlie?
Okay.
Okay. Jeff?
Okay, at this point, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented by Mr. Wyland this evening.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
I think Jeff got in under the wire there.
Oh, that's okay. We're all on the same page.
Any discussion? Seeing nothing, Janie, could you call the roll?
Mr. Appoff?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Meadson?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. Andy, you can publish. And thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you for your job. Thanks.
The information on the mill rates, really interesting. Okay, next item on the agenda, D3, is the Dane County United Way SEBITs agreement. And Candace, briefly from you regarding this.
This is very similar to last year's agreement. We've been in partnership with the United Way Dane County and Dreaming and Health since about 2004 to do the SEBITs, which is a trauma intervention for students at the sixth grade level. So this is just a formal agreement for us to enter into that partnership with United Way, Dane County, and Madison School Districts and Kerry and Middleton all as well for the program.
And Gina, you've reviewed this?
I have.
And does it meet your legal approval?
It does.
Okay. Any questions of Candace regarding this agreement? Dan?
Is this, is there a cost to this?
The United Way covers the funding for the program itself, and our staff are part of the intervention. So it costs us in kind with our staff members, doing the interviewing with the students and providing the intervention in partnership with Base Kids and Dreaming and Health.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions of Candace? Seeing no questions, I'd enter into, all right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the signing of this MOA on behalf of the district.
So moved.
Krista makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff makes, or seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Janie, would you call the roll, since it's a contract?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Meadson?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Appoff?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, thank you, Candace. And then we'll get the appropriate, who's, do I have to sign this at some point? Okay. I will sign it on behalf of the board. The next item on the agenda is from Policy Committee, and it relates to, I'm going to get there, Policy 174 and changes made specifically to 17402. Barb, I believe that's you.
Yes. The Policy Committee met to discuss the issue of committees specifically. And you recall, we had a previous meeting where I think all board members were there. And we had facilitated discussion led by Dr. Busler about what is the purpose of a board committee, define the work of the board committee, et cetera. So when we met in policy, we had a list of that feedback that we went over. And we ended up with a recommendation, which I will say was not unanimous, to amend our Policy 174 to delete the standing committees, human assets, physical assets, and financial assets. Now, the thing that I just passed around is something that we
Let me, let me stop you there. And then this was a form of motion made at the Policy Committee to make these amendments, and it passed that Policy Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a motion on behalf of Policy Committee tonight to approve these changes?
Correct.
Okay, and that does not need a second, because it's coming from a committee. So continue, Barb, this is time for questions and discussion.
Okay.
Barb, we saw the floor.
So the thing I handed around is something that we asked Gina and Dr. Busman to put together, I asked, to define the various types of groups, because we use these terms kind of loosely. And it seemed like it would be a good idea to define each of these types of groups, board committee, task force, ad hoc committee, standing committee. And this is something we can keep and refer to in the future when we're setting up a group for whatever purpose, to try to use language that's consistent. After much discussion, the policy that you see before you was passed, the idea, the reason that I support this policy is because I think we have at any point the ability to create an ad hoc committee to look at an issue in more depth. Therefore, we have a mechanism to refer issues to a committee structure without having a full set of five committees. And the two committees that we have remaining are the ones that have been most active in the last year, policy and vision in which I view as long-term planning. So that is what you have before you.
Okay. Any questions of the Policy Committee? Any questions or clarifications? Okay, we've got a motion on the table.
I have a question.
Okay, Gwen.
One of the things that I disagreed with this moving forward, but I don't vote, because I'm not on the Policy Committee anymore, but I do attend. And I think that it takes away oversight from the school board and puts it into a small minority of control issues. When you look at who appoints, it's board president, board president, or superintendent, board president, superintendent, superintendent. So without, with that being said, it is problematic because there, and if you have made any, there is a lot of overlap on who attends these ad hoc task committees and task force and standing committees. I think that a better way to approach this is to keep the committees, so that school board members can participate in them and meet when needed to be. But to take it out of policy is disrespectful to our constituents, and that we need to have more information. And I would also like to say at this time that information and sharing of information between the board and the administration should be open and very transparent. At this point in time, we all have to go through the board president before we can speak to administration at now. And this had, this also
Well, that's not true.
And this also
That's simply not true, Gwen.
And then this, excuse me, I have the
Gwen, that's not true.
I, it has been stated, and I can bring up things that we can't, that it has to go, given permission by you, Steve, before you take it to administration.
That's not true.
And so this is problematic for a school board, because we're all a part of the system here. And I think that being a part of the committee and keeping more than two committees is very important to, to the operational, to the operations of our wonderful district. But I, you know, I have, and I would beg to argue with that, because when I ask, I can't ask a question unless I go through you, Steve. And I think that this puts into policy a more controlled methodology of communication. And I totally oppose this.
And I will tell you again, that your statement that you can't ask a question without going through me is false. Any other comments? Charlie?
Yeah, I actually took some time to take a look at other districts in Dane County and what they do. Having two committees frankly makes us pretty much of an outlier. Verona has eight, Sun Prairie four, River Valley seven. I really think that there is value in having a number of forums where we can have some discussion of issues more in-depth than really is a lot of that regular board meetings. I'm not going to suggest exactly what the composition or titles of those committees should be, but it seems to me things relating to physical assets for the district are not an issue every single month, but there are certainly times of year when it's been very busy. And the opportunity to have an opportunity for the public as well as board members to have some in-depth conversation about the district needs, I think is very valuable. The other thing that committees do is it allows the board members to develop some expertise in some areas. That is of value to the board as a whole when it comes to making recommendations for the board to consider. I think this is a bridge too far. Would like to see some further consideration of what committees, in fact, the board does or should need. I know that the issue has been raised with regard to the finance committee and having not served on the committee, I can't really speak to that very well. But having served on the physical assets committee, I know there is some value in having an opportunity for in conversation with Larry and with other administrators when you really have to get down into the weeds. And that's not really something you want to do at a board meeting. I mean, that really, I think
I agree.
makes it ineffective.
Oh, yeah, you already talked, because you introduced it, Krista. I'm going through.
I was on the Policy Committee that discussed this, and it was my understanding that it is a future agenda item for a Policy Committee to talk about what committees the board should have in terms of standing committees or board committees. So I don't view this discussion as finished. The other thing, I know that before I was on the board, there was discussion about having a committee of the whole. And so I think this discussion has been going on a long time. And there was also committees that overstepped their bounds. And so I think that was a concern. So I guess I view this as an ongoing conversation that, you know, based on some things that have happened, both the state law and things that have happened with the school board, that we're really looking at committees. And part of this is removing a committee that's no longer feasible. So I guess I view this as, that the Policy Committee, from my understanding, will still have this conversation about what board committee should be, looking at research that Charlie's going to bring back to the committee from other school districts. So I view this as not final discussion.
Dan?
I like the idea of having a specific group of people that's identified at the beginning of the year who are going to be the bargaining team, whether we call it the human asset committee, or whether we call it a bargaining team. I think it's important for the board to know who those people are, so that if you're a board member who wants to have input into that, you can talk to a member of that committee, instead of when it's bargaining time, all of a sudden, we find out that these people are the bargaining committee, or that the president of the board decided that he's going to do all the bargaining for the board, which I completely disagree with. I think that, I'm going to oppose this, because we don't have a human assets committee, which we've had for the longest time. And I'm used to having that, and I think it's very important that we have that. I think that our physical assets and our financial assets have been, as well as our human assets, have been well managed with our administration. But we should not create a policy, a framework for our school district based on the assumption that specific people are going to be with us forever. I think we need to create in policy the structure that we want to have, whether we have the people that we have now, or we have newer people, or other people in the future. I, I think that the human assets committee is really, or some form of specified group, whether it be a committee or something else, be put into here. And what we have is a human assets committee. I don't agree with getting rid of that. Physical assets and financial assets, I think, could be combined, because they don't have a lot of work. Andy is amazing. He's got his hands on this, and he's got a control of it, he's got an understanding of it. But the board also needs to have people that are talking with Andy, so that if, God forbid, something happens to Andy, or if he takes one of those numerous offers that I'm sure he gets on a regular basis, that we've got some people on the board that can help us choose someone else, or to transition, so that we don't rely on administration for every, everything. Now, I'm not talking about micromanagement, because we don't want that. But we do want the board to have liaisons that are specifically related to certain parts of the school district, I think. I have, I share your concerns with the consolidation of decision-making, Gwen, because specifically, we have no bargaining committee now in policy if this goes through. Bad idea. Yes, policy is our main purpose as a board. But this is part of policy, and let's build, you know, something that mirrors or supports our administration and our teachers without getting in their way. I think we had something that was working fairly well. Certain committees didn't have to meet that often, so be it. But we had them there, and it was a part of the understanding that certain people had certain roles within the board. And I was comfortable giving those people the leeway that they needed, and they could do the research, and I would trust what the physical assets committee told us, what the financial assets committee told us. So we didn't all have to try to dig into the budget, or dig into different issues that were coming up. For those, for these reasons, I don't agree with the changes here that are proposed to board governance, and I will vote against this motion.
Okay. My view on this is, I agree with the changes. Board committees have been variable over the years that I've been on the board for a long time. We didn't have a physical assets or a financial assets committee. They were developed because of perceived need. I didn't think we needed it, but it was, they were, they were put into policy. I, I didn't think we needed it, but it was, um, they were, they were put into policy. You know, those two committees met three times last year, and I challenge you to tell me that they develop any degree of expertise in those areas by, by meeting that infrequently. And it's basically for review of what, um, administration tells us, and then we repeat the same presentation to the board. Human assets was, was a different animal. It was, it was, that, that was the bargaining committee, but that, that was before Act 10. We really, we do, really don't have bargaining anymore in the sense of bargaining like we used to. We're limited to giving the CPI. To the extent we have discussion about items that used to be within the context of bargaining, we're doing that within either the meet and confer process or at policy committee with respect to the employee handbook. So, those functions are still there as opposed to a, to a bargaining committee. And, and, and the bargaining committee only existed in the year, it was appointed ad hoc, uh, and during that year that we had bargaining. And then they didn't meet for the number of years that we didn't have contract negotiations. So, we can handle it much the same way as we did then. So, I'm in favor of these. Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, I, I, as I mentioned, I've taken a look at some of the other school districts around the county that have various committees. A couple of them has really stood out, and I think we ought to give thoughtful consideration to. For example, Verona has a school calendar committee. And I know this has been a perennial issue, we're talking about balance calendar or other kinds of things. I think there's real value in having a place to really talk those kind of issues out and to have an opportunity to invite more community participation and input. One of the things I like in particular about Sun Prairie, except for the Employee Relations Committee, all their other committees have both teacher and student representatives who sit on the committees to provide an input as the, the end users in a sense. I think that's a real valuable thing to have those kind of forums for conversations, discussion more in-depth than we're really able to have at a board meeting when we have 15 minutes beginning of the meeting for community input. There is a, for example, Mount Horv has building and grounds committee, education committee, finance, personnel, and a wellness committee. Well, I don't know. I, I guess what I would like to do is suggest that maybe we ought to take some time to take a look at, again, at some, at some of the other districts have done, take a look at some things that might fit with our needs as well. And, uh, rather than just sort of jettisoning what we have right now, I think it's really an opportunity to have a more extended in-depth conversation about what we need to do to address the district's needs in terms of providing, with opportunity for community input, as well as opportunity for board members to develop some understanding insight into areas that at times get complicated, that don't lend themselves well to the kind of information opportunity that's provided at a regular board meeting. So, uh, I guess, I'd be happy to make copies of this, or go over and take a look at it in terms of seeing whether some things here that might, uh, strike some interest.
Gwen?
Um, I have to agree with Dan and Charlie, and I like the idea that Krista came up with, that perhaps we need further discussion on this, because, um, you know, like, one of the reasons human assets committee was Xed out was, or I like the word jettisoned, is for several reasons. It was Act 10, but that doesn't mean we can't have a, a committee of, of relations, you know, staff relationships that doesn't just talk to teachers, but also to other people, and that had, that would give them a forum. Also, I like the idea that Dan suggested is to combine the financial as well as the, um, physical assets, because I think moving that together, again, to me, it's all about transparency and dispersing information and not waiting to one meeting and not giving time to ponder these things. We deal with a lot of interesting and, um, broad, important statement or policy changes and issues, and I think that bringing it to discussion at a board meeting does not allow for that oversight and/or for careful rational thinking over what's happening. I will oppose this, and I also would like to state that, um, my earlier comment is not false. And, um, if you would like, I can bring forward some emails to show you as such.
Dan?
Um, I just wanted to, besides what I had said before, to bring a question from a point that you made, Steve, that we don't have contract negotiations anymore. I think that was the, the, uh, the gist of it. And I don't believe-
It was not in the, not in the form that we used to.
I agree that we don't have contract negotiations over all of the things that we used to have contract negotiations over. And I will also agree that contract negotiations last year were so smooth that you would hardly even know that we had any. But that is because of the great relationship that we have built up with the OEA and with our staff, not by ignoring the fact that we needed to take, uh, seriously contract negotiations, but by taking them very seriously, spending a lot of time and effort and communication, getting it to the point where we could have very smooth contract negotiations. I think if we take the position as a board that now that Act 10 has been passed and things have changed, the board no longer needs to be concerned with contract negotiations. I think we're going to have a real problem on our hands. And I, I seriously doubt whether we will be able to talk about anything else for the next few months if, if that actually happens.
Well, that's not what I was suggesting, Dan. And, you know, our, the bargaining is solely about base wage rates, and we're limited to any discussion on the CPI. And this, this year, it's a quarter percent, quarter of one percent. So, uh, there's, there's not a lot to talk about in that climate and with the law the way it is, frankly. So, and it's not to say that we don't value having conversations with our union. We do, we have leaders meetings, we have meet and confer. So, I mean, just to clarify from that comment, real briefly, Gwen, another-
Oh, this is very brief. I just want to thank, um, Charlie for bringing forward the comparisons of our neighbors, because I think that's, you know, we, we look to our neighbors, and, um, I think that it's a big mistake to, to vote on this board governance and to get rid of committees.
Anything new in terms of comments? Barb?
I just want to say, I think we should not discount the value of using the ad hoc committee option to help us understand what our need for standing committees is. It's easy to list, well, we should have this committee and this committee, because it somehow seems logical. But my concern is that we are clearly identifying a need before we appoint a permanent committee. And I think the ad hoc option is a great way to, um, delegate further research and conversation to a smaller committee and over time, find out if there's a pattern, if indeed there are issues that frequently come up that fall into a category where a standing committee would be appropriate.
Anything addressing that, Gwen?
Yes. Um, considering, or in regards to what Barb has just mentioned, I get the idea, but once again, um, you know, who is on the ad hoc committee? And I think that sometimes we need to make sure that, I'm not confident that the people that are asked to be on the ad hoc committee are going to be inclusive of, of townspeople and students, et cetera, to bring into their, into their, um, to bring a wide diversity of concepts and ideas.
Krista?
I would just make a point that Dan is now leading an ad hoc committee about an environment, or task, environmental task force, and he had input on who was on the committee along with Brian Bussler that was not the board president.
Yeah, I, I'd really find that offensive, Gwen.
Well, that's okay. You can find it offensive.
I just would like to deal in facts, so that would-
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna-
I have facts, I'll show you two.
Why don't you, um, we have a motion from the, the committee to modify 174-02 as indicated on the, on the materials before you, can you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff?
No.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Ms. Maitzen?
No.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Motion carries for three and 174-02 is amended pursuant to the policy committee recommendation. Next on the agenda is from the Vision Steering Committee and its approval of the board paper, and that's you, Jeff.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's from, from the committee. The committee hasn't looked at the paper since, uh, July, so this will require a second. The board approved a preliminary version of the position paper in July. There haven't been any substantive changes since then. Feedback from school leadership teams were incorporated, which were received in, uh, July, I believe. The tech section was expanded a bit to include a couple of examples. And there were some wording changes based on feedback from board members. So, hopefully, those of you that have read it, you shouldn't, uh, find any major differences since July. I'd like to thank Barb and Gwen and Krista for all their work on it this summer. It devoted pretty much their entire summers to the position paper. And special thanks to Krista for, uh, getting help with, uh, graphics and, uh, the final formatting of the paper. Just a brief history, this is, this is the culmination of almost two years of work. Steve came to Vision Steering in November of 2014 with the idea that, um, we weave together previous board papers and current initiatives into a unified vision of what education should look like in our district. That led to many discussions in the spring of 2015 on the Vision Steering Committee. That led to the 2015 Visioning Conference last August, where we had over a hundred community members take part. That led to lots more discussion on the Visioning Committee to try to work through all the advice and suggestions that we receive from the community, especially lots of work on the administrator's part, which we are very grateful for. And, uh, from that process, we came up with a values document, which was approved by the board in March, I believe. The values document was then used as input for the position paper that you had before you tonight. I think it's a wonderful document, something we can be proud of. Hopefully, it will serve as our guideposts for many years in this district. So, um, I am moving approval of the position paper, the Oregon School District Plan, forward and to enter it in, uh, district policy.
I second it.
Hey, Gwen's got the second.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, Charlie.
Uh, I would like to suggest, one is really just a small editorial change. Top of page 15, there's a reference to the district being increasingly more diverse. It's seeming that's redundant, either more diverse or increasingly diverse. I don't think you need to have both of those. I think it's just a lot clearer language to say increasingly diverse or more diverse.
And any, if they're like typos or any minor things, you know, we see those before it gets formally-
Other than, other than that, I would concur with Jeff's comment. I think this is visionary. I think it's a really, uh, good start down the road. And I would like to also commend the, commend you for the work that you put in. I think this is a really good paper.
Barb?
Gwen? Um, I want to thank Steve for spearheading this whole process. I thought it was a joy to be in the Visioning Committee. Also, it was a joy to be a part of the writing, and I want to thank Krista for jumping right in so quickly and, and Barb as well. And, um, it was a pleasure to work on this, and it was, it's also something that I personally am very proud of. And I want to thank everybody on the board for, and particularly, Steve, you ran really good meetings for this. And, um, I think we got a lot accomplished. It's a little bit like herding cats, and yet, uh, not really, but kinda. And, um, and like I said, I'm extremely proud to be a part of it, and thank you for, um, all the hard work. And also to the administration, they came back with really good, you know, they would take it to the leadership teams, and we value the feedback, and it was really a very collaborative, positive, um, process. So, thank you, everybody.
Krista?
After Charlie's change, I'm probably not going to read the paper for a year.
Okay. Dan?
Great paper. I agree. Thanks to everybody who put in so much work on it, and especially you, Steve, for being the, uh, impetus behind this and then, uh, staying on for yet another term to see this thing through. I think, uh, this is good for the district.
Yeah, I, um, I sat down and read it last week, um, and it was really early in the morning. And I got done, and I said, "This is, this is really terrific." This is, this is what we do best, guys. When we stay at policy level and think forward, this is, this is where we should be working. And when we do that, we do great things, and we need to keep that in mind. This sets us apart from districts in the state. Districts don't do this. We do. And we've continued a 25-year history of Oregon school boards by doing this. Charlie?
What I particularly appreciated, and not just brought, which I think is very good, what I was particularly impressed, and Steve, I'll give you some, kudos to this, I think the process was very good.
Yes.
It was collaborative, it was open. I was not a member of the committee, but I felt, uh, my input was always welcome, and I think that was very appreciated, and I think real effort was made to include and involve people in the discussion of creating something which I think, uh, stands very well as a representative. Great work by this board.
When, when you look at, you know, I threw out a first draft of stuff, just, you gotta have someplace to begin, but you compare what that was to where we are now because of that process, it's, it's really good, so. Janie, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Seven zero, that, that makes us very happy.
I think it should be noted that we have lots of boards that are seven zero. Not tonight, but that's okay. Discourse is not a bad thing.
Discussion items E from policy. Anything further from policy this evening? Okay, anything further from visioning, Jeff?
No.
Okay, informational items, and Brian, this is your Q annual meeting, and I think this is just, uh, kind of updating the board.
Just a reminder that our next, that at our next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting prior to it is the annual meeting, which is, uh, Monday, September 26, 2016. As you know, there is a rather prescribed meeting agenda, and Janie, I'm forgetting exactly where we set that. All right, that's probably at RCI, right? No, it's here. Okay. I, I didn't recall off the top of my head. So, we will be right here, uh, at 6:30 for the district annual meeting.
Okay. Opening 2016-17 school year, Brian?
Uh, there's a lot of things, I'll try to- There's a lot of things, I'll try to limit it. And I'm going to frame it a little bit around our capital referendum. As you learned from Andy already, we have approximately 3,700 students this year, plus around 300 open enrolled students, which gives us just a little shade over 4,000 students that we're serving every day. That's at our, that's at the center of our mission, and that's, that's what we're focused on. It's been a busy last two and a half weeks as we got the school year started. A couple of, a couple of other quick items, you'll recall in the capital referendum, one of the focuses was school safety. This is year two of our new bus parent drop-off loop at Prairie View and Netherwood. I'm not out there every day, but I was out there the second day of school and talking to the principals and staff at Netherwood and Prairie View. It is working exceptionally well. Parents are following the rules, and it is significantly safer than it used to be. I did spend the first day at our, at Brooklyn Elementary School, and the new bus drop, bus and parent drop-off there worked exceptionally well. And that is amazing, considering we had it done three or four days before school started. We, I also spent some time at the high school for their new parent and bus drop-off. Considering we were putting asphalt down on, I almost laughed, on Wednesday night and starting school Thursday morning, we did it. And the contractors came through, and students and staff and parents did a great job. And we have a significantly safer school at, at Oregon High School. There are a lot of kids, there are just a lot of kids at Oregon High School when you think of the size of an average school district and, or an average high school in the state of Wisconsin. The last school safety issue, you haven't met this gentleman yet, but I would like for you to meet him sometime. It's our new SRO officer, Kyle Shuey, who is an Oregon graduate. And it, personally, it's really satisfying to have our SRO officer be a young man that all of us gave him his diploma, so that, to me, that's very cool. Remember, our second major theme was learning environments. And under learning environments, Leslie and I had a conversation today, and she remarked on how smooth the math bridges curriculum transition has been. Teachers feel really great about that new math curriculum. The process that we used this last year was inclusive, collaborative, and we have a lot of support. And it's just great to get that huge initiative on a K5 basis off to a very, very smooth start. Our outdoor classroom, which is not under the lights, but dark right now, has, has had great use by both Prairie View and Netherwood staff. We've been working with a group of parents on, on the prairie elements around it, and that is an outside learning environment, which is very, very unique in public schools. Under the energy conservation, that was really our third theme. Andy shared some information with me over the summer, and you can correct me, Andy, if I'm wrong, but we have the most solar panels per capita in a Wisconsin public school district, which is really, really amazing. And there is the man that led the charge. Andy looked at all the various options, decided the best plan with the architect and contractors, and that is a really unique thing for us as a school district and also a great learning experience. At the middle school in particular, we've had that middle school solar panel system up where students can lock it into a computer and see the effects of the sun. And that, that's just, it, it's a testament to the board as well.
Gwen?
Can we qualify at all for any LEED certification? At this point, I don't know anything about it, but I do know about LEEDs.
Sure. So all the, all the buildings were built with LEED certification? So that, that's actually in our contract with Bray. The thing is, to get LEED certification, you have to pay for certification.
Oh.
And so we haven't spent that money to, to get the plaque, essentially.
Understood.
Well, we could if you.
We could if you wanted to.
How much is the plaque?
I'd have to investigate that. It's probably not cheap because of all the different things you have to do.
Well, at least we have it, right?
It's, it's built into our buildings, we just don't have the plaque on it.
And thanks, Dan, for making that charge under your presidency.
And then, of course, the last item with energy conservation is the geothermal projects that are going on at the middle school and, and the high school. And maybe the second, maybe that's the second last. While those projects aren't up and running yet, they will be up and running really soon because the high school academic center, we believe, is going to be open if we have good construction weather this fall. We should be open for second semester. And it looks like Oasis, again, if we have a good construction fall, we might be ready to move in August, I didn't mean to say August, April 1st, right after spring break.
Really?
So, but those are exciting opportunities for us.
Thank you.
So, that's a really quick back-to-school and opening of the school year. And you can see the smiles on all the administrators' faces because there's nothing better than having kids back in school and us doing the mission that we believe in. And even our high school student, she has a huge smile, so I know she's excited to be back in school. Oh, is that what that's for? Sorry. So you should have a lot to be proud of. And Gina mentioned to me, we had it down this year. We had one point, we had one position, which was a point-to-five band position that we needed to have a substitute to start the school year. But we had interviewed and interviewed and interviewed, and I think we've hired someone this week. So we finally have all of our positions filled. And the goal was to hit. We had 99% of them filled probably by August 3rd or 4th. There's always the last couple that just seem to always be tough. So that concludes that part of my report, Steve.
The Donovan group report.
Janie, would you distribute the orange sheet that's underneath your? Yeah, please. Good to see you. Hi, Joe.
Hi, how are you?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to be here today. I'm happy to provide you with an update on our referendum communication today. And Gina is handing around a double-sided, one-pageer that we created. And I wanted to say that creating a first page in a referendum is always the most challenging piece. And I think that it's especially challenging for an operational, and I think that it's probably most challenging for an operational referendum like this, just because it's the kind of thing that you really want to be able to have a five-minute conversation with a neighbor about, rather than to have, you know, one piece of paper and hand someone. But, but I'm really pleased with it. It was difficult. I think we went back and forth probably a dozen times on different drafts, but that made it better.
We owe you a stat.
No, no, no. It, it, it was, it was, it was a great process. I want to thank Gina and Dr. Bustler, but mostly, I want to thank Ms. Flanagan for all of her work. It is fantastic to work with someone who has so much experience in this area. And I, I think that we had a pretty good document before. I'm really pleased with, with, with where it went as a result, so thank you for that. Now that we have our first piece completed, now we're able to move full steam ahead on some other pieces. So we've completed the web copy, the first draft of our presentation, a newsletter, a newspaper article. And we started this afternoon. After finalizing this piece, we went into development on the first mail piece, which is going to be, we call it a long-form, four-panel piece. And if I were to take the two documents, that's, you've seen these before, we did these for the, for the last referendum. It's an 11-by-17 document that's folded once to make a booklet, folded again to make a mailer. The nice thing about that is we have a lot of four panels, four pages for a lot of great information, so we can provide a little more there. Again, this is, it's, it's difficult information to communicate. I feel really great about the, the first piece. And again, now that the copy is established, we're able to, to move forward a little more quickly. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Gwen?
I really like how, on the second page, you put, "How will the plan be funded?" I think that's very clear. And I'm not, thank you. It's just an easy way to describe it.
I wish I could take more credit for it. It was a great process.
I understand that it's a collaboration, but the paper looks fine.
Charlie?
Yeah, Joe, part of my concern is that a lot of times on issues like this, people make their decisions based not so much in facts or information, but in feelings, how they're feeling about the district, how they're feeling about the experience that their kids are having in school. And I'm just wondering, in terms of how we might tap into that more effectively. I mean, this is very useful information, particularly for people who read. A lot of times, people don't read very much or catch only the headlines.
Yep.
And so I'm concerned a little bit in terms of how we might get more visibility out there, particularly, I was thinking in terms of finding ways.
Charlie, we got to really be careful about advocacy versus facts.
Right.
Okay? Because we can't talk about advocating for at this meeting.
What, what I'm suggesting is that we might take advantage of opportunities to share some of the success stories that this district has had.
See, that's advocacy, I think.
Well, it's, I, I think that's information. I'm, I'm not talking specifically about the referendum or reasons to vote for the referendum. I'm thinking as a district, it would be really very useful, I think, to tell our story.
In terms of sharing our vision for the future and understanding how our vision is moving in school.
To tell our stories, the 99% graduation rate that this district has had is a significant thing to celebrate. And I'm just suggesting there might be some opportunities to, you know, get that out there as well.
Any other questions, Joe, or comments?
I like, Joe, on, on this page, the, the chart there that talks about the impact because the $45, this is an important piece of information that people will want to see. And that it jumps because it's dead center in the middle of a box. It's the middle thing we get, so I like where it's placed.
And with that, I'll, I'll say, it takes some discipline to put it on the backside because there is a tendency to want to put that on the front, but that's, I think, where people will often stop. This, they're going to get to that, people are going to look for that.
Right.
But we really want them to understand the question of why.
Yep.
Thanks for that.
Good. Anything else for Joe? Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Superintendent Report, do you have anything additional other than what we've talked about, Brian?
Just more super quick things. As you can imagine, we are busy, and it seems like Joe and I, or Gina, Joe and I are having a conversation virtually every day in preparation for the November 8 referendum. You noticed in my weekly update that so far, we have 38 meetings or touches with the community. And if you have a group that is interested in a meeting or a touch, we are happy to make that work. Various administrators will be joining me. So far, there's only one meeting that I can't make, and I'm not going to make that meeting because I would be in super hot water with somebody that I love dearly. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to mess that up, but my great colleague Gina said she would cover for me.
How's your voice?
On that night.
I'm getting, hopefully I'll be better back on the road tomorrow.
Her voice is back. The one thing Joe didn't mention, we also spent some time this past week. We have a PowerPoint, and by the time I got the weekly update ready for Janie, I think I forgot to send it to you, so we will have that posted on the board website for you to take a look at. Oh, you've already got it, great. Sometimes that might get tweaked just a little bit, but that's sort of the building PowerPoint. The reason I was late for tonight's board meeting was Shannon had her back-to-school activity at the middle school, and it was an opportunity for me to get in front of probably five to maybe 600 parents. And the amazing part, it made me feel young because I still knew a lot of parents, a lot of middle school parents, and all of their children, their child number like two, three, or four going through the middle school. But it did make me feel young for, for a while because my son hasn't been in the middle school for almost six years. But the point, we're sharing this with the community, and we dropped about 500 of these tonight at Oregon Middle School. I'm going to be doing the same thing tomorrow night at RCI with their back-to-school night. If anyone would like to join me, it's a simple process.
What time is it, Brian?
Jay-Z, you're, you're back to school, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, and we have parent connections at 5 o'clock, and at this time, where we have community of life helping out and doing a dinner for the parents.
So anytime between 5 or 6, Barb and I did this back in 2014, and I forget how many of these we handed out, but it was an absolute ton of them. So we're going to be doing that a lot. If you'd like, if you'd like some, JD can make some packets and maybe give every board member 100 of these, because as you're traveling in your various circles.
That's a great idea.
The more that we get this information out, the better because it creates questions and connecting points. And Charles, it does what you asked us to do, which was really tell our story. And there's nothing better than telling that story on a person-by-person basis.
Brian, I'm wondering if you could provide us with the list of the events that are being held so that we know people who haven't been to one of these, they might refer them, or they could, you know.
Absolutely. Well, I'll, I'll, Janie, would you like that in an email?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. We'll do a cut and paste from the update, and we'll send you an email on that. And one thing that Brian and I have been working on, and you might have gotten some emails on about busing issues, a couple of things have popped up, and Brian and I are working directly with those and reaching out and answering questions. And we'll continue to be in the loop with the board on, on those things as we move forward. I think one of the things that's being looked at is the potential of alternating school start times as one possible option to resolving some of the wait times that we're hearing about. So Brian and I have been working with those constituents who have reached out to us to tell us about their issues. We've had seven or eight so far, and I made the mistake of walking into Mark Fink's office on Thursday and going like this because so far, as of last Thursday, we had zero parent feedback and complaint. And I hadn't looked in my email that day, and there were like four or five, so I, I hexed us. But in talking with Andy and with Mark, we are planning to come back to the board with the report on school start times at the, at the November board meeting, which I forget the date off the top of my head, whatever the second meeting in November is. So they've been working on a plan, we've been communicating, Jeff, with your neighborhood, and I think we have all the parents that have reached out to us from Raven Oaks, we've closed the loop on, so. And I think we have the loop closed on everyone, except one that Steve forwarded to me today, and they live in the Whalen Road area, which I know is like, that's not.
That's Fish Hattery.
Yeah, that's more Fish Hattery, so we, we just haven't been able to dig into those details yet.
Great, thank you.
But send them our direction, we'll meet with the parents and figure out a solution.
All right, future agenda, you have the proposed agenda for the meeting on September 26, which is, we'll start with the annual meeting, and we approved that agenda at the last meeting, and then typically, the meeting, the regular board meeting after that's fairly short.
Right now, we don't have anything teed up, but if something comes up between now and then, we'll.
You know, and, and if we don't get it, if we don't get anything teed up, we'll just do the annual meeting and adjourn out of that without having a, a regular board meeting. So we'll see. We'll keep, keep you guys posted on that. All right, checkout. Jeff?
Okay.
Charlie? Barb?
Yep.
Gwen?
One thing that struck me after we did the construction tour, first of all, I found that it was very, very, very exciting. And then, it's been in my head for a week or so. I can't even remember when we did it, was it last week? Whatever. But what came to mind was, is I grew up in Chicago suburbia, and big high schools, big beautiful high schools that were always up to date throughout time at Memorial were, were common. And what crossed my mind the other day was that we have a school that rivals the Chicago suburbia school, and I was so proud to be a part of that referendum. And, you know, and I think that that's something that, what a legacy. And I think it's absolutely wonderful. Also, thank you, Tessa, for coming. And also, thank you to our admin who is doing the tireless efforts of getting out to the community members for, for this second referendum. It's got to be hard to keep doing the same spiel over and over again, but it's greatly appreciated, so gracias.
Thanks.
Krista?
Nothing.
Dan?
Nothing.
Me either, other than to entertain one final motion for this evening. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion, meeting is adjourned at 9:21.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:21.